Moore?
Here.
O'Kane, Shaner?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Please stand for a moment.
Here.
Silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible). (inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just so everybody understands, Mr. O'Kane is not here today and Alex is traveling, so he is unable to vote, but speak as clearly into the microphone as you can so that he can hear it through the computer system if he would. Interview for the Kosovo Sister City Committee, Marty Hogan. Marty, come on up and tell us why you want to serve.
Why I want to do this? I served in Kosovo quite a bit in the military. My job there was more of an ambassador, but I worked KSF, Kosovo Security Forces. I helped them get their medical certification for NATO for Row One. I did that from 2016 to about 2022. One of the other efforts we were into is loading in logistics, finance, a little bit of everything within their military system and kind of coming in line with what we could do with the National Guard at the time. Obviously, I'm not in the National Guard anymore.
So were you at the 185th?
I was, yes.
Okay. I thought so by your references, but I wanted to make sure. Okay. I'm glad you applied for this. I think it's great that you're going to be serving on.
We traveled the country quite a bit when we were over there.
Yes.
So we did, you know, when you go over there, they respect Iowa and Iowa Guard quite a bit, and we got a lot of tours. I did a lot of stuff with civil authorities and stuff like that because we had to do exercises there. We did them up in the mountains and in the middle of cow pastures and stuff. So we had to do quite a bit with the, you know, with a lot of medical responses, so.
Good. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Let me know. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Today, the consent agenda is Items Three through 14C. You can consider them to pass unanimously. Well, we're not going to do the consent agenda. We're going to call the roll, so we don't have to read that. If you want to speak on an item, please come up as I read it. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. I'll move the consent agenda. Second? Three is a reading of the October 15th, 16th, and 20th City Council Minutes. Four is a motion appointing Nick Davison to the Effective Fiscal and Public Policy Committee. Five is a resolution accepting a donation from Sulan Pickleball Association for the Riverside Tennis Courts Pickleball Resurfacing Project. Is anybody here to speak on that? I just want to say that's a great partnership and...
On up, Angel.
Yeah. Anyway, that's a great partnership and be sure and express our appreciation for what they do out there.
They're very involved with the maintenance. They like to keep up on all that, don't they?
Yes, they do. Angel Wallace, Sioux City Parks and Recreation Supervisor. Yes, it has been a really great and successful partnership with Riverside Pickleball, with Riverside Pickleball Courts and the Sulan Pickleball Association. So they've done tremendous amount of work on that courts, and it is very vibrant and lively location.
And they often use long lines too, right?
They do use long lines as well. Yep.
There are regulars there for sure.
Yes, daily.
Yeah.
So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Six is a resolution deleting special assessments against 525 14th Street. Seven are actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the rehabilitation of the Old Bacon Creek Sanitary Sewer Project. B is a resolution adopting construction documents for the 6th Street Bridge Reconstruction Bridge Deck Replacement Project. Actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the school district for the development of the main overlook project at 2017th Street.
Mayor?
Yes.
I asked Jill to just come up for a minute already and to bring a little diagram of that project, the House, at least a little example, just to kind of reinforce what we're So important to find every lot that we can and make it available for, you know, approachable housing, and this is a great example of city-owned property and another partnership that we formed, so please go ahead.
Sure. Jill Wondershied, Neighborhood Services Manager. So this is a new partnership for us with the Sioux City Community School District through their Trades Pathway Program. We are proposing to purchase eight of their homes that they'll be building over at their facility over on Highway 75 and moving them into a lot that the city currently owns over on 17, or 17th and Main Street. So you can picture where the, oh gosh, like the healing football field, clear up that hill, right to the east there is where we'll be putting these. So this is a floor plan that shows what we're looking at. We're looking at basic ranch-style home with three beds, one bathroom, with another opportunity for a bathroom in the basement plumbed in that way with some egress windows as well. So they'll be able to grow into that home. Our agreement states that we will be purchasing the homes for the material costs only, and all of the funding utilized for this project are federal grant funds, so there's no local dollars in this project.
And then the resale of the homes?
Yep. So we will resale the homes based on their appraised value, and then our funding source makes up the difference to make it affordable for someone to purchase. So we provide funding in the form of closing costs and down payment assistance.
Great work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jill.
Hey, Jill.
Oh, Alex is speaking.
Jill, any chance that these homes would be zero entry?
They are.
We're not quite to that point yet. We will be doing all of the grading and the plating work for the entire development all at once in the beginning, so I can't answer that question, but our funding source does require that any homes that we build have to be easily renovated to be accessible. So if we do have someone that comes forward that says, hey, I want to buy this home, but it has to be accessible, we are required by our funding source to make those accommodations and make it accessible for them. So that's why you'll see the laundry on the main floor, those kinds of things that we couldn't really change as easily later.
Yeah, no, that'd be great. And I know it's fairly easy and the city has programs to be able to put decks in place or ramps in place to be able to access homes, but I just wonder if the topography will at least allow it, if you could do anything to try to make these units zero entry, at least at the entrance or within, I forget if there's, I don't think there's a garage, but if at least the front entrance or one of the entrances could be zero entry, I think that would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. And we do know just because of the topography of the site, we'll probably have some retaining walls here and there, so we'll definitely take that into account. If there's opportunity to do that, we definitely will.
Thank you.
Okay. Mayor, I need to abstain. Conflict of interest. Good thing we have three here today then, Mr. Moore. Well, it is a good thing. Okay. Do we have to call? No, it's in the consent agenda. Okay. B is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with DGR Engineering for the Nebraska Street Water Main Replacement Project. C is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with DGR Engineering for the South Cornelia Street Emergency Repair Project. D is a resolution approving change order number two to the contract with Night River Midwest for the city facilities asphalt overlay project. E is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with Felsberg Hold and Ullvig for potential alternate truck routes for the 4th Street Bridge and Floyd Boulevard Freight Study Project. F is a resolution approving change order number one and two to the contract with Mark Albonicious for the Southwest Scott Street Water Main Replacement Project. G is a resolution approving a contract to Triple D Contracting for demolition of 2928 and 2930 Gordon Drive Project. H is a resolution approving a First Amendment to the Development Agreement and a First Amendment to the Minimum Assessment Agreement with Lave Bay Developments for the redevelopment of the property at 1107 and 1109 4th Street. I is a resolution approving a consent agreement and a stop with Hawthorne Global Aviation Services in Wilmington, Trust for Property for the Airport. J is a resolution approving a settlement statement with DuPont for the PFAS Class Action Litigation. K is a resolution approving Amendment Number One to this consulting services agreement with OC and Environmental for the Pulaski Drainage Improvement Project. Nine are actions relating to personnel. A is a resolution suspending Iowa Code Section 400-1111A hiring requirements for water treatment plant and underground utilities department employees for one year. B is a motion authorizing city staff to enter into negotiation with Ameriflex to manage the city's health savings account, flexible spending account, and Cobra account. I have a question on that, which we don't have anybody here, Mike, but how are we going to negotiate a contract, get all of our employees loaded, and have this ready to go January 1st? It seems to me, and I'm not, I think your HR department does a great job. I don't want it to sound like this, you waited too long on this.
It's going to be tight, for sure.
Yeah, well, what you can't do to employees is furnish a benefit and then not perform that benefit. That's what worries me, and Lord knows, I have enough problem downloading my receipts to info whatever IBC, but it's, I just don't see how you get it done. I don't know why we didn't get going on this earlier.
No, I acknowledge the fact it'll be a tight turnaround, and that's why I did talk with Janet and Janelle before they were not here today, and they said we could still get it done if it was not approved today, because in their absence, they claim they can still get it done. Open enrollment begins in December.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Thank you for letting me talk. Hi, I'm Stuart Lee with IBC, and we're the current administrator. I just want to talk a little bit about the contract or the proposal that was submitted. I reviewed the information that was submitted to the council, and a couple of things that stood out. They were a little bit cheaper than us, but that didn't include runout claims administration, which would be approximately $4,000. Your plan has what's called a grace period, which allows employees to have claims in 2026 and still file them under their 2025 flex amounts. It's kind of unusual. We have 150 clients we administer claims for, and you're one of probably three or four that do it this way. Most allow people to just carry over money. Your plan allows them to actually have claims in 2026 and get reimbursed from 2025.
And it reaches back then?
It goes backwards.
Oh.
So for a new administrator to take over this plan, we would have to provide them with every single claim that your employees' independence had in 2025, dates of service, provider, all that information. We have to charge for that, and unless we're going to do it, we charge three months. It's in the contract with the city. We charge three months to administer that going forward. So that would put another $4,000 on the contract around next year's proposal from Ameriflex, which would put us cheaper than Ameriflex then. So if all things are equal, we're actually less expensive.
So do you charge when some, like, somebody goes down there? Do you charge extra if you write them a check?
Nope. Good point. We're in downtown Sioux City.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
We have a lot of your city staffs to come into our office with their claim forms with waiting for a check. I checked with our team, and they said probably about five a week. Nobody can offer that kind of service for downtown Sioux City employees. We have 16 employees right here, and we've been here since 2005.
Do you know, we talked earlier, and do you know if, can you just point out to me where that is in the, in this write-up where it has IBC and list of dollars, or is that, do you have those pages handy?
On the dollars? Is that what you said?
You mean for that service? For the service? Well, what you were saying, you'd make up in it in 2026.
Oh, yeah.
It wasn't ever brought up, so I pointed out to them, how are they that much cheaper? Well, who's going to do your runout claims? And I emailed them this morning, because I didn't have a lot of time to look at this, and I know they're out, so they sent me an email right before we got here, and I think they said that's part of the negotiation process. Again, I'm not sure how you negotiate that after you've agreed to go with somebody, or how you negotiate with me after you've agreed to go with a different carrier on administering that.
So that wouldn't have been showing up in the numbers then?
Right.
What you're telling me?
Right.
Okay, that's why I can't find it.
Okay. Also, they had some ancillary services like identity theft protection. Well, your Blue Cross plan offers that at no cost, so. The other thing I wanted to point out on the information in the discussion was Ameriflex said they would cover any negative balance the city had at year-end. I was unfamiliar with that. I did a quick AI search. We know it's not 100% accurate, but that said that's not legal by IRS standards, and it disqualifies your plan if a plan administrator reimburses for uncovered expenses to a group. So something you definitely better check into.
What would the timeframe be then for negotiating with IBC? I mean, are... How do you negotiate with that mayor? Is what? Well, I mean, if we defer this. Yeah, if you can't defer for a week, but it's to negotiate with not IBC, but the other one is what I'm saying. Oh, isn't that why we defer?
They could revisit that.
Or to get some questions answered.
Right.
Yeah, but I mean, what would that timeframe look like?
As far as negotiation, I would have to defer to my...
Yeah, I don't know how much time they would need to negotiate if you deferred it for a week. I guess we can ask that question.
I'll move we defer for a week.
Second?
Said that your staff said that was okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. On the deferral. Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. Actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution authorizing payment to Sioux City Engineer for the Ridge Avenue Emergency Repair Project. B is a resolution approving a settlement agreement and release and authorizing payment. C is a resolution authorizing payment to Journey Construction for the wastewater treatment ultraviolet disinfection project. D is a resolution authorizing payment to Thompson Solutions for the wastewater treatment plant air quality H2S positive pressurization system project need to abstain conflict of interest. E is a resolution authorizing payment to municipal pipe tool for the Riverside Boulevard and Hornick Avenue sanitary sewer repair project. Eleven are actions relating to property.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask Tom up just before we move on to the next category and just talk about our ultraviolet, ultraviolet system and what it's doing instead of the...
Yep.
All right, we're finally done. It's up and running. Let's talk about it just for a minute.
Tom Pingel, Utilities, or Public Works Director. We started this project about a year and a half ago. This project was to, one, replace our current disinfection system that is quite costly in the amount of chemicals that it takes to disinfect the water. This was a great option to switch over to UV as it uses no chemicals. It does use energy, though, to create the ultraviolet light to disinfect the water. The project went off fairly, really smoothly. Journey Construction was the contractor, and Black and Beach was the engineer. Really didn't have any big bumps during the project, and we were, it just took a lot longer than expected due to some electrical components that were out on due dates for the supply.
This is the final step before...
Yep. Once this is completed, the project will be closed out, and in the state of Iowa's eyes, the UV project will be completed as well.
Get the stamp of approval from them. And now we're not using what? What's the chemical?
Sodium hypochlorite, and we also had to use sodium bisulfate to quench, to eliminate the sodium bisulfate before it went to the river.
Now we're not using those at all. It's going through UV, and then it's going into the Missouri.
Exactly. Yep. It's a lot safer for our staff down there as well, not using those chemicals.
Okay, thank you.
I want to thank the council mayor for the support on that project.
Thank you. Actions relating to property. A is a resolution inviting proposals for the transfer of land in the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area, announcing intent is consent to the transfer of Rick Scott, Jennifer Lowell, and Shane Scott, and scheduling a hearing for the property at 1153 235th Street. Mayor, I need to abstain. Conflict of interest. B is a resolution determining the necessity of scheduling a hearing on the adoption of the proposed amended and restated urban renewal, urban revitalization area plan. I should go back to number 11A. Contrary to what people thought when we built the ballpark in Sioux City, I'm not related to that. Well, I'm, no, I'm not related to that Rick Scott or Shane Scott, so I don't, Jennifer, you're in the audience. Is that, that's not Rick Scott, my nephew, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Twelve is purchasing. A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Iowa Office Supply for furniture at the new utility building. B is a resolution awarding a surface provider agreement to Iowa Office Supply for the insulation of furniture at the new utilities building. C is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Sioux City Ford for one Ford Escape. D is a resolution authorizing the purchase of property insurance from Mills, Shell, Hammer, Pitts and Association. Thirteen are applications for alcohol license, and fourteen are board commission and committee minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Twelve C I need to abstain on conflict. Twelve C. Call the roll, please.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. Fifteen is a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment actions on October 14th. I'll move that. Second? Anyone to be heard? Call the roll, please.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Thirteen is a hearing in ordinance rezoning 2290 41st Street. The petitioners, the city of Sioux City, P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that. Second? Public hearing is now open.
Andrew Gleiser, planning and zoning chair. If you guys have any questions.
Yeah, we're just zoning it back to what it was.
Yes, correct.
Hearing is now closed.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. Anybody opposed to waiving the mandate, the way the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that. Second?
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Move second and third. Second?
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. Seventeen is a hearing in ordinance adopting a site plan for 3601 Country Club Boulevard. The petitioners, Verizon Wireless, is less E, on land owned by the community school district. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that. There anyone to be heard? The hearing is now open. Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Ain't conflict of interest. Eighteen is a hearing in ordinance rezoning 3700 Jefferson Street. The petitioners, Dolph Eibner, P&amp;Z recommends denial. So I, again, we gotta always get this right. I'm going to move it. I'll second. And that means?
If you vote in favor, then that is for what has been requested by the petitioner. If you vote no, then that's agreeing actually with what planning and zoning's recommendation was.
Yeah, council, we unanimously voted against this rezoning and asked city staff to look at, you know, future land in that area, largely because of the community, the Leeds community, when this was brought for us earlier this year, recognizing that the industrial use probably doesn't make that sense close to that community.
Dolph, you want to go first? Want to say something or not?
I'd like to. We don't have a full forum, so not...
No, you got to come to the mic. You got to come to the mic, sorry.
Matthew's not here, right, today?
Correct.
So I'd like to push off the next whenever he's here.
Deferred a week?
Yep.
Well, that, okay, but there's a whole lot of people here to be heard, so we're going to at least hear what they have to say, okay? Does anyone in the audience want to be heard on the item?
Barry Bulkey. I live on 4103 Jefferson Street. I'm also the president of Leeds Community Club, so when I can say that I know my community, I know them pretty well. This was brought up last year. We came here last year and forced yet again and explained to the city council that this is not going to be good for our community. We have not only a school and a park within 500 feet of this area that's going to be rezoned, we also have another school within 1,000 feet. And as I expressed the last time, if I came before you asking you guys to build a school next to industrial zone, you would ask me to do it elsewhere. That doesn't make sense. So now we're doing the opposite yet again. This doesn't make sense why we're putting this in the community next to a park and schools. On top of that, as we expressed the last time, this is where the bike trail runs. This is where now Leeds is the connecting area between the plywood trail through Leeds. This is where it starts right along there. That's the first site you guys are going to see. On top of it, at the zoning meeting, the petitioner has said when he looks out in that field, he sees tanks, a popcorn factory, like a warehouse, something else to be built. I see the backs of people's houses, a neighborhood. Like, this is, this is where people live, is right next to industrial zone. And I know, any of you that have played SimCity, the video game, your communities fell apart once you had industrial next to residential. You can see already down Floyd Boulevard where the industrial is, that that community's suffering, and that's what's going to happen to Leeds. You guys are expressing concern about housing in the city. Like, we want good places to live. That's what's going to go away right along this area, like, and it's just going to keep spreading through the community. So I'm asking you yet again, because last time you guys unanimously voted against this, and I appreciated that, that you do the same, because as a community, as, I want, I go to the door, I hear people talk about it. I wish other people would, because you find out the elderly, the people that they're struggling, that once this happens, they can't move away from it. They're trapped until they pass away, like, as disturbing as that is. So I'm being very hopeful that you take into account our community just as much as a business. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
And I got to say, I apologize, we did have one, one member vote yes. They were wanting to require a site plan to have anything go further.
Can you do a site plan on industrial?
Chris Madison, City Planning. Because it'd be part of the rezoning, a condition of the zoning to require a site plan, it could be on any zoning district.
Hi, Lila Baker, 3412 Floyd Boulevard. I'm right behind there, and everybody keeps talking about how they can shade it, you won't see anything back there, and they keep talking about what they do see. Well, I brought you a couple pictures of what you do see.
Yep.
You can see that the bike path is right there, too, in a wonderful line. You can see where the train tracks go. So you can see all that back there. You can hear the train back there, and if you put a big industrial back there, everybody's going to be able to see it. All the houses that face on there will see it. Right now, there are trees. On the other side, there's like a lot of trees, and it's all buffered by that, but you can still see it, you can still hear it. So if you get something bigger and that, you're really going to be able to see it. It's not going to be blocked out. And I'm only a block away from the school, so if I can see it and hear it, the school is going to, and all that's going to filter over to the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you putting it up?
I'm working on getting this up here. It takes just a moment to flip that camera. Okay. There, that's the first photo, so that councilman Waters can see at home as well. There we go. And there's the second one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Heidi.
David Raymond. First question, do you have to have Mr. O'Kane here to vote on this? And then, second, the, if you wanna rezone it and then require a site plan after you rezone it, because you're only gonna limit it to certain uses, that seems counterproductive, because that requires somebody to come up with a site plan that you might turn down, even though it's already been zoned as industrial.
Well, if it's in zone, don't, zone industrial and the site plan doesn't prevail, it doesn't go.
Yeah, but if you rezone to industrial and then say, but we're not gonna allow this industrial or that industrial, why rezone it industrial?
Well, I'm not saying we should, I'm just saying.
But that was the proposal.
Yeah, I know, but, but we've done, not, I don't, I mean, I'm sure we've done an industrial back in the day. We do a lot of commercial ones where we actually do require some additional site plan work, but anyway, industrial is a little weird to do it that way, but I, it can be done, I guess. Go ahead.
Well, the only other thing, I've managed to stay away from the council meetings for a little over a year. The last time I think I was here was on this issue, but I brought this up a few times, the comprehensive plan two thousand and five. My youngest child was one or two years old in two thousand and five. He's graduating from college next spring, so I keep hearing that it's gonna be done, but it's been, what, twenty years? That's all I have.
My name is Pearl Kilser. I live at thirty-four oh-two Floyd Boulevard. We have had the luxury of being up here multiple times, trying to keep this from happening. Just wonder when and if it will ever stop. When do we have to quit fighting for our community? Because we do like it. I've been there since nineteen eighty-four. It's a nice place to live, raised my kids there, working on some grandkids around that area. We just don't need to lose it to heavy industry. There's plenty of things that can be put back there that don't require that type of development. Thank you.
Before we have any more, those people that are opposed to the zoning in the audience, can you raise your hands? Okay, and those people that are in favor of the zoning, raise your hand, okay? Um, I don't know, what's the wish of the council? I'm, I, I just assume vote, but mayor, did we get a petition? It takes a super majority, doesn't it? Were there enough?
There was, I believe it, it takes twenty percent of the property owners that are within that two hundred foot area, and I think Chris did the calculation, and we were at three and a half percent, so short of the twenty percent to require a super majority.
Wait a minute, say that, all those petitions, only three percent were in that?
We did receive a petition against it. Nineteen signatures were on that. By state code, it's the area within two hundred feet of the property. So, the properties that were within that two hundred feet, the portion of their property made up three and a half percent of that total area.
Because you're counting the Williams Pipeline on the other side.
Fortunately, we have to count all the property within.
Wow. Well, let's, let's explain that.
State code, correct.
Let's explain that and be, ninety percent of the people live next door and houses are opposed, I would say. Well, I'll say eighty percent, I'll be generous.
Right. We did reach out to Barry and the Leeds Community Club before the meeting to let them know what state code requires and what would be necessary to require that super majority of council.
It doesn't take a super majority, but it still takes three then.
I would be fine with deferring. If that's what the petitioner would rather, I'd, I'm fine with that. I'd be back in the chambers, and if he would like Matthew to hear, hear and be able to have a vote on it, I'm fine with that.
I would second that.
I would move to defer this item for one week.
Second.
No.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Typically, you can change this, and I should've said this before, but my recollection over the years is when a, when an applicant or a petitioner requests a deferral, we, we usually honor that. And I understand what the residents are going through, and they're gonna have to come back in another week, but typically, we've, we've honored that, mayor. I'm sorry I didn't get that in before, but, and Chris, if you disagree, just disagree with me, 'cause I, that's my recollection, usually is when, when it's.
Correct. If an application is denied, either they have to wait a year or substantially change their request. In this case, likely be a different zoning.
Well, and that.
It was over a year from the last request.
No, he's saying that when somebody requests it to be deferred, we normally do it, and we normally do do it, but.
Do do it. But that also, Chris, goes to the point one of the residents raised, when, when does this stop? But don't they, by rights, by the ordinance, they can come back every year?
That's state law, correct.
State law. So, I just, you know, I, I know you don't like it, but I, but that's what state law is, so there's, yeah, you're the one that, that asked about, when will this stop?
I'm trying to figure it out right now, so I don't know who's gonna win.
Okay, yeah, yeah. All right.
All right. Thank you. Along to hearings. Number nineteen is a hearing and resolution to determine an area of the city to be blighted, designate, designating it as an appropriate for an urban renewal project and adopting amendment number two to the amended and restated combined Central Sioux City CBD Urban Renewal Plan, property acquisitions downtown between Wesley Parkway and the Floyd River Interstate twenty-nine and Third Street, and the purchase of property at one hundred, one twelve and one twenty-four Pierce Street. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing is now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye. Twelve is an ordinance amending chapter ten point five-four motorized scooters, electrified bicycles, and personal transport vehicles. I'll move first reading.
Second.
Now, you and the chief can explain exactly what you're doing here, 'cause this is.
That was my question, too.
Something police officers and lawyers are gonna have fun with, and I.
Yes, and.
I could read it all day and not understand it.
Yes, and I think Caleb Christofferson will be coming into the chambers as well. Oh, he's right here, sorry. Caleb helped draft this as basically a response to some enforcement issues that we were having, and recognize that there's a, was a gap in the code that we needed to address.
You're the drafter of the, let's not have any fun ordinance, right, Caleb?
Caleb Christofferson, Assistant City Attorney. At the behest of, of, uh, some police officers in response to several incidents that have occurred, that, that have raised legitimate safety concerns for especially youth in the city. Uh, these, these, you know, technology has advanced, and often the law is a little slow to catch up. I, I think that what, what I've drafted in, in responses seems to capture at least what we have now in terms of the devices, that, what, what we wanted to do is also not get our personal transport vehicles caught up in any restrictive type of enforce, enforcing redrafting of this. People who have, especially the disabled persons with their motor scooters, that is, that is not the aim of the changes here. We don't wanna restrict any disabled person from being able to move about with the devices that they have. So, I wanted to be very clear about that. I believe the ordinance makes that clear. But also, certain newer devices that are out there now simply didn't fit into some of the categories under the old ordinance, so this ordinance, again, as Nicole mentioned, fills these gaps.
Give us some examples, could you please?
Sure. Uh, there are off-road, there's off-road motorcycles, the really, really small motorcycles, some refer to them as pocket bikes. They're marketed generally, if you look on, on the web or at any of our big box stores here in town, they're, they're sold as trail bikes. They're not street legal and they're not street safe. They don't come with appropriate street tires.
Definitely not sidewalk. They, they run down the sidewalk.
Sidewalks and streets as well. Um, one case had, I believe it was a ten-year-old and two twelve-year-olds that were zipping down Morningside Avenue at five AM, and only one of them had a headlight. None of them had taillights, and they're very low-profile vehicles, and if a car had pulled out from across the street, um, and you can imagine. Fortunately, that, that didn't happen, but tho, those, that's one of the targets. Does that answer your question?
It does, it does. I just, I just want it simplified, you know, so that undereducated mini-bike, motorbike, trail bike people like me understand what the change is or what the gap is, what are we missing here? Because it isn't that we're fun haters, it's that we're danger haters, I guess.
That, that, that would be accurate. I couldn't, couldn't say it better, so.
Anyone to be heard? Anyone else? I do have a question about enforcement, because having been through the fireworks year after year after year after year, how can this even be enforced, chief?
Rex Mueller, Police Department. First thing we'd have to do is train our staff on the use of the ordinance. Uh, I can tell you that in the years passed and some of the things, when those mini-bikes emerged, uh, state code talked about cubic centimeter size of engine, it's talked about speed, there was a lack of clarity, so I think Caleb's done some appropriate adjustments, and the next phase, if passed by the council, is that we would, uh, train our staff as to how to utilize this as a tool, and that would be train them on, to understand the new ordinance.
How do you catch them, though?
Good question. Sometimes, it's not impossible. It ha, it happens, sure, absolutely. And it happens, and we've had, you know, we've had complaints, uh, and we've had varying success in, in doing directed enforcement in those areas, but we're gonna try, but the, the key is to have an ordinance that matches it, uh, or that allows us to enforce. Having an ordinance or having, trying to follow state laws where it's nonspecific is a recipe for somebody getting out of that ticket in court if we don't have, you know, we don't have the appropriate amount of information to write those tickets. So, this is step one. Next step, two, is, is training our folk. That would be expecting them to enforce the ordinance, and then, like you said, catching them. I'm not gonna.
Educating the community.
Educating the community.
You know, we talked about just walking up and talking to them, and.
And we have a lot of resources doing it, and I think the community listens really, really well when we utilize our social media, so, um, beyond educating our officers, as you said, would be educating the community, and I would expect that would be part of what we would do, and that Ann with the city would.
I think that's effective, right. Okay.
Caleb, you have in here unless otherwise provided about the ten years of age, under ten years of age. Is it otherwise provided somewhere else in here about an age restriction?
I'm sorry, I.
Okay, in age restriction, you changed, it says unless otherwise provided, it's under ten point five, four point zero four zero. Unless otherwise provided, it shall be unlawful for anyone under ten years of age to operate a PTV.
Right, a personal transport vehicle. That would not be, that would not involve the non-PTV devices like the off-road motorcycles and UTVs like your Polaris Rangers, things like that, but the PTVs are, as defined up, up in section one of the ordinance.
Right.
That, um, that, yeah, if, if there is a device that comes along, if, if there is, you know, a need to have a higher age, I guess, to restrict it to a higher age, this ordinance can be flexible then in that manner.
Well, and Caleb, I actually, unless Dan had a follow-up, I don't wanna interrupt Dan. If you have a follow-up, I'll wait.
Thanks, Alex. Well, I do, because maybe I'm reading it wrong, it says unless otherwise provided. So, can PTVs, is there somewhere else in here where somebody could be eight years old and could?
No.
The, the, unless otherwise provided is highlighted as a change, and I just wondered what you were getting at.
Right. It, it, it would, it would, the verbiage is, is to provide for flexibility for any future, uh, future amendments or additions based on any other advance in technology requiring, um, a new amendment.
Lawyers sometimes disagree. Mayor?
I shouldn't have opened that up. Alex, save me, ask the question.
No, you're fine. Um, Caleb and chief, I just would, first off, thank you for your willingness to adapt this language, and hopefully we can have, um, at least an ordinance in place to try to have an enforcement mechanism. I guess the question I have, I have a few. The first one I would pose is, and remind me, chief, because it's been a long time since I was this age, but don't you have to be of a certain age to get like a moped permit even? Am I wrong about that?
No, mopeds you do.
Right. A moped is a motor vehicle that would require a license.
Yep. And these are, this category, we're trying to catch all those things that you could buy that wouldn't require being plated or licensed.
Okay, so, a moped, you would have to be still of a, I thought you could be fourteen and drive a moped if, or I thought there was a moped permit, but maybe I'm incorrect.
It'd be good, at fourteen, yeah, fourteen is the.
Fourteen is still the age.
Okay.
And that would be state.
Um, 'cause I do worry, sorry.
I'm sorry, Alex, that's state, um, state code as opposed to, I mean, we, most of our ordinances follow state code, but this is an enhancement.
Yeah, no, and that makes sense. I guess I just worry about that ten to fourteen age range. I mean, I will say that the differentiator that I want is to make sure that we are understanding that these are different than traditional mopeds, and these are vastly different than, say, like the Lime Bikes that you see in larger communities. That's the, I wanna make sure that's differentiated in this ordinance, because, you know, someone driving a bicycle, an electric bicycle, that now, not only are people using them more often as maybe an assistive technology if, you know, they're not as strong or, you know, advanced in age, whatever it be, or they're using it because in the community, say Lime Bike or a similar company would wanna bring scooters or bicycles to town and allow people to get to and from. I want them to do so safely, and I know sometimes they use them on sidewalks or on the streets, but those are, those are very, very different than the mini motorbikes that, that we're trying to really, because I'm seeing a lot of those people using those are extraordinarily reckless, and it, that's the type of behavior we wanna quell, not necessarily just people using public transportation vehicles such as those.
Definitely, Alex, uh, this is, this is Caleb. The electric bicycles are not specifically addressed by this ordinance, but under state code and under existing city code, operators already have to operate with, you know, at reasonable speeds and yield to pedestrians and things, and if they are caught being reckless, there are, is existing code for enforcement against those types of violations as well.
Okay. So, you're just saying, I mean, it doesn't preclude someone from riding in those or us having those in town, it just says you have to follow basic protocol or yield to pedestrians or things like that? Is that kinda what you're saying?
And are you still, are you still referring to electric bicycles?
Correct, yes.
That, um, yes, that'd be accurate.
Okay.
Anything else?
Okay.
Call the roll.
Moore.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move it.
Second.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
I'll move second, third.
Second.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Presentation by the Warming Shelter.
Just here to introduce Shayla Moore. She's Executive Director of the Warming Shelter. Um, we had a request to have them come and speak and give a little update on their operations, their tiered approach that they've been working with, or working on over the last, how long has it been now? Several months?
Since February.
February, February. So, um, a little bit about our office and how we. February, February. So, um, a little bit about our office and how we interact. Um, our office is the keeper of the coordinated entry list, so anyone that is experiencing homelessness, we want to get them on that list so they're able to be referred to openings within our community with all the different agencies that collaborate, um, when those become available. So, the Warming Shelter's been a great partner to us with regards to, um, sending people down our way, following up, making sure that they're making those connections with our staff and we're getting them to those agencies that they need to get to. Um, so with that, I'll turn it over to Shayla.
Are you going to manage the-
Yes, going through the screens. I'll just say next slide. So my name's Shayla Moore.
I am the Executive Director of the Warming Shelter. Thank you, Jill, for your introduction. Um, so yes, um, we were invited to come do a brief, just kind of overview about, um, our recent changes. Um, and so first I'd just like to start off as, you know, our mission has always been to save lives. Um, and our mission does continue to be, um, saving lives. However, it has grown and our new mission reflects that. Um, so our new mission, um, short and simple, save lives, restore hope and rise up alongside of our clients. Um, next slide. So our, um, new tiered system that was implemented in February, um, is grounded in evidence-based frameworks, um, including trauma-informed care and Maslow's hierarchy of needs. So as you can see, um, we have some goals that we were wishing to accomplish by implementing this new tiered structure. Um, so with new programming comes goals and by the length of this page, you can tell that, um, we were pretty motivated when we were looking at what we wanted to accomplish. Um, so I'll just kind of quick go through, um, our goals. Provide year-round low-barrier shelter beginning in 2025 and continuing annually thereafter. Um, we were previously a seasonal operation and, um, we are looking to do year-round moving forward. Train all new and existing employees in trauma-informed care. Um, verify that 100% of our Tier Two clients have completed a coordinated, coordinated entry intake within one week of being designated to that tier. Um, host onsite mental health providers, um, two to three times per week. Provide a sh- shelter representative at all coordinated entry meetings. Um, provide daily onsite access to local organizations, um, by hosting those, uh, representatives onsite so that our clients can more easily access the resources. And reduce the average number of monthly first responder intervention calls. Um, up there it says 65% and that's Meyer. I, I, um, our goal was 50 to 65% and I'll talk more about, um, kind of those numbers here in a little bit. And then lastly, um, this is still in the works, but implementing a structured mentorship program for our Tier Three clients. So what does this mean for our clients? Well, um, year-round access to meet their basic needs. Um, safe, stable shelter with coordinated internal support system as well as external support. Um, ongoing access to essential resources needed to stabilize and move forward. Opportunities to build and strengthen positive support networks, clear expectations and compassionate accountability, as well as sustainable pathways for community reintegration. Um, so what does this mean for our community? Well, um, this means quite a few different things, but I kind of summed it up here. Reduced criminal activity related to survival behaviors of the unhoused community. Um, when folks do not have the things that they need to meet their, um, basic needs, they're going to have those survival behaviors. And so with us being, um, available year-round, we're hoping to see less of that. Cleaner, safer community, um, decrease in the spread of infectious diseases, reduction of emergency room misuse and reduced strain on first responder services. Um, who we serve, just quickly, um, same, same individuals with a deeper impact. So our individual female and male clients as well as families seeking shelter. Um, I did put some other statistics up there, uh, such as how many nights of shelter we have provided, which is, um, almost 191,000 nights of shelter as well as 146,000 days worth of shelter. And that was updated just recently, last week. Um, we continue to offer, um, day shelter as well as overnight shelter and service availability and timeframes depend on those tier assignments. Um, what makes us a low-barrier shelter is that we have very minimal, um, expectations, uh, criteria that people have to meet in order to come into our shelters. Excuse me. So the main things that we're looking at are bag-in-person checks, basic security. Um, they must complete an intake, they must be able to take care of themselves or have a designated caregiver that is staying with them. They must check in and they must remain safe while they're with us. Um, I, I won't go through this entire list, but, um, there are quite a few things on this list that folks do not realize that we do provide. Um, and some of those things include the secure medication storage, vital document storage. Um, we serve as a mailing address for folks who are unhoused that couldn't otherwise get their mail anywhere else, as well as, um, we have our own resource and advocacy liaison who, um, kind of bridges the gap in any services, making sure that our clients are connected with any, um, community resources that best fit their need. Other than that, um, our services are really structured around shelter, A, um, B showers, laundry, hygiene, that kind of thing. Anything that you or I would need on a daily basis is what services are available at our shelter. Same for overnight shelter, um, sleeping facilities, access to restroom facilities, those types of things. So, um, really diving into the changes that we've made. Um, our new tiered, um, arrangement of operations, um, it requires varying levels of client involvement while also still allowing us to serve, um, some of those higher-risk clients that might not be ready or willing to engage in other services right off the bat. Um, movement between the tiers and, um, progression is dependent upon engagement in services, both internally and, um, within the community. Sobriety, adherence to program rules and expectations, which are all surrounding safety, and then having a housing plan. Each tier does offer, um, incentives that are, basically allow our clients to have more con- control over their situation. Um, and I'll talk a little bit more about that as I go through the tiers. So our Tier One, um, those are, those are the higher-risk clients that I shared about just a minute ago. Um, those are the individuals who might be inactive, um, drug use, alcohol use, that kind of thing. Um, we are providing overnight shelter, showers, laundry to those individuals, but on a much more structured, um, approach. And basically they're able to come in for showers and, um, laundry on specific days and they're able to, um, present for shelter each night, but they are not allowed in our facility during the daytime hours. Um, this does, um, include a very small percentage of the folks that we're serving. So, um, I'll give those numbers here in just a bit, but, um, that would be kind of the overview of our Tier One. Our Tier Two clients, um, they must meet those baseline entry requirements. Um, we do drug test, so, um, we drug test them when they're ready to transition to Tier Two. Um, we also, we also breathalyze when they come in, um, from any unsecured areas of our shelter. They must not have had any unsafe behaviors, um, or tested positive for drugs or alcohol within a ten-day timeframe. These individuals are allowed in for overnight shelter, um, however, that is separate from our Tier Ones, as we're trying to support those who are making the right decisions and who may have in the past struggled with substance use, that type of thing. They are also allowed in during the daytime hours and, um, all services for these folks are first come, first served. Um, we do require them, uh, as well, I did not mention, to, um, within one week of being assigned to Tier Two, um, to connect and do an intake appointment with coordinated entry, which Jill, um, described what they do, um, prior to me giving this presentation. Um, our Tier Three overview, so this is our, um, highest tier. These individuals are basically doing everything that they need to do. They're just kind of in a waiting period. Um, the biggest differences is, um, that they have to have 30 days with no, um, safety concerning behaviors and they must not have tested positive for illegal substances or alcohol within that 30, 30-day timeframe as well. Um, I talked a little bit about giving these folks can, a little bit more control back of their situation. And what that looks like is seniority for things like, um, showers. They get to choose what time they take showers or clothing items, what they, they get to pick what, you know, clothing, rather than just being chosen for them. Um, they also get to choose their bunks in the evening hours, which, um, might not seem like a big deal, but it truly, um, it makes a, it makes a difference. So, um, lastly, we are working on a mentorship program as a means of connecting these folks with long-term supports that will be available even after they're no longer staying with us. Um, and that is an effort so that we do not see these people returning and so that they have a positive support person that they can work through some of the bumps in the road after they, um, obtain a stable living situation. Next one. Last night, we served 117 clients. Of, of those 117, 21 clients were on Tier One. Uh, 84 of those clients are Tier Two, eight of our clients that stayed last night are Tier Three. And then, of course, we do serve families and children are not assigned to a tier, however their parents are. And so they're getting some of those same incentives and, um, that type of thing. So where we're at with our goals, and I'm just about finished, um, we're on track with all of the goals that I mentioned a bit ago. Um, and I, I did want to emphasize that, um, when we talked about hosting mental health partner organizations, um, that has been a huge benefit to both, um, our, our organization employees, um, as well as our clients. Um, we've been able to more easily connect them with the proper mental health services that they need, um, in a shorter timeframe, which has prevented some of those, those behaviors that we don't want to see. Um, in addition to that, we are seeing a very large decrease in the number of calls for first responder inter- intervention. And, um, what we do to kind of track that is I stay in touch each month with, um, folks from Sioux City Police Department who can give us, um, statistics on how many calls have come in and that type of thing. Um, and we have tracked those numbers for, for the last couple of years. And so how we're gauging that is basically we're just comparing the number from the same year, the same month in previous years. Um, I'm trying to think. Um, one last thing that I don't know if I put a note up there on, but we also are, um, in the works of getting a onsite case manager, um, through the Iowa Primary Care Association, which will provide, um, three days' worth of case management for our clients, um, throughout the week, um, on a consistent basis. So that's, that's another thing that we're working on currently. That is kind of the basic gist of my update, but I would, um, welcome any questions, um, insights, anything that you guys would like to add. Well, thank you guys for welcoming me up here and if you guys do come up with any questions, my information is on that slide. Thank you.
Shayla? Shayla?
Yes, Alex.
Yeah, sorry. No, you're fine. I, I really do appreciate you coming and sharing some of those updates. I know I had been talking to Jill about how things were going and I know there's a lot of, um, perception out there about, um, the operations and how things are going in our community regarding homelessness and different things. And I just wanted to talk through some of those changes, um, or at least hear from you how they were going because, to my recollection, the last time we had you here at council, you know, we were discussing funding and the, um, sustainability of that funding. And not only that, but I remember you and I meeting quite regularly discussing that, look, I, I don't want this to be a, um, um, a situation where people are just coming in there regularly and just not seeing the hope to get out of that situation or a path forward. And I really was challenging you and your board to make sure that you are proactively kind of working people through the system. And it sounds like it's really doing well and I just would really commend you and your staff. I mean, in talking with Jill and Neighborhood Services, um, I know what certain people will say in the community or what some of the optics are, but I do think that, and I know that you're working on some of those things or continue to work on those things, but I would just commend you, uh, for at least taking these steps because I think that a lot of people don't understand the changes that have been implemented and how they're, um, being effective. And, um, while people are, people are being critical, oftentimes I don't think that they will actually ask questions or try to seek to understand before just opening their mouth and, um, kind of saying whatever's on their mind or whatever their perspective is. And so I appreciate you at least being here to share, um, some of those steps that you've, you've taken. I think it means a lot.
Thank you, Alex, and I certainly appreciate the opportunity to educate our community in any way that I can. And so I really appreciate the opportunity to do that on this platform and I would welcome, you know, any other, um, at any other point in time, if anyone would like me to give further updates, I am glad to do so.
And Shayla, I do have, um, kind of one question and this goes to, I think you and Jill, um, since you're there as well. What I would just ask or implore, um, us to think about and continue to try to address is I think that where the disconnect comes is the meaningful work that I think both of your areas, your organizations and departments are working on. And then the disconnect of what maybe people are seeing in the medians and on the street corners. And I understand that oftentimes those are people that are not even seeking services or from our community or wanting to do anything to find a transition program. And I guess, I don't, I don't expect an answer. I know that there's not an easy answer, but I would just invite the, the two of you. I think that's where we need to take a critical look is, because I do continue to hear, you know, from our downtown businesses and some other areas. Um, and, you know, you see people, um, in the medians and in areas around the city. And I think that it's those optics that are getting the bad rap for the hard work that the two of you are doing. And so it's difficult to kind of curb that, but I just, I don't know if you have any thoughts or how to address some of that or those individuals that are kind of, um, skewing the optics of, of the work you're doing.
I would say, this is Jill Wandersheid. I would say one thing to, um, I try to remind everyone of too is panhandling and those experiencing homelessness often don't overlap. And so the people that you're seeing, um, may be very well housed. Um, we know a lot of the people that we're seeing, just our staff are housed, so it's not always a, an overlapping issue. I don't know if you have every, anything to add as well?
Right. So obviously I, I live in this community. I drive through the downtown streets and I will not say that I never see clients of ours doing panhandling, but I will say that it's pretty rare, um, that I'm seeing our clients that we're serving, um, on those street corners. And so, yeah, you know, whenever I'm asked by, you know, the media and those types of things, I absolutely, you know, support the signage that's up and that kind of thing. And I always offer, um, as much as I can, ideas on ways to support those people that doesn't, you know, include handing over cash and that kind of thing because that does not support forward-moving, um, goals. And so, yeah, I mean, I think that we're seeing pretty much the same thing on both ends and we just gotta keep communicating that to our community.
Yeah, and I guess I appreciate Jill very much the distinction, um, because even I was kind of naively making that is that, you know, that would be the correlating factor and that's not always the case. But I think to that point too, though, it does come down to still the frustration that if those individuals are not seeking assistance to get out of the situation, but are still willing to go wherever in our community and stand there to solicit money, um, I try to scream it from the rooftops to not give donations or not give handouts there because it's doing nothing to curb that problem or to help these individuals get back on their feet. But I know that's sometimes harder to do, you know, and people- But I know that's sometimes harder to do, you know, and people don't heed that message necessarily, but, yeah, I just don't know what to do, because those are the people, the people that are wandering around asking for money and that are not seeking services, so it's tough for us to address them, and that's what's frustrating.
Absolutely, and I will be the first to say that there are tons of local organizations who could make that $10 go far further than it goes when you hand it to the individual that is panhandling, so I am on the same page, Alex.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks again.
Citizen concerns, please come forward if you have a concern.
Hi, Catherine Meyer, 1423 Douglas Street. I was here two weeks ago begging you guys for help with my animals, and I was told never to contact Bob Scott again at his office, and nobody paid any attention. Been two weeks, I never got my dogs back. A friend of mine from Mississippi came and got them. The city is withholding a police report that would have exonerated my dogs, and I've had to hire an attorney to get it.
You have hired an attorney?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
Yes, for the city. I'd like you to show yourself, I told you that I had a dog that was getting ready to have puppies, and I cared about her, and I was absolutely refused to even see my dogs by animal control. So I brought this for you to show you. I've never seen such a gross abuse and neglect of animals. These are two of the six puppies that were in my dog. I want you to see them. They were three pounds. They starved to death in your pound. They were neglected. Now there's four disabled vets that won't have their service dog, which we donate to them for free to be trained by the military. And have you ever seen anything so pathetic? Do you know where they found these two? Outside of animal control. These were a three-pound puppy, they're a king corset, if you're familiar, very, very large dog, a very good companion dog. They're not a violent dog, and mine were taken from me, I was never allowed them back, and they did nothing. And the police report, or the animal control report, from the fifth day of October, would have exonerated my dogs, because animal control was at my house. After they got another false report about my dogs, and one of the officers came, and she wanted to see my dogs, which I had two there, one a registered service animal, which is mine, and the other one, a very old male. I have found out the person who filed the false report after kicking the crap out of one of my puppies is a stripper from Mavericks, and all of the people supporting her in her statements are criminals from this area that have violent and drug crimes on their record that are that long. And my family, I don't know if you love animals like I do, but this killed me. I've been 10 years, I've been breeding these animals and donating them and training them to help people who are disabled, and these puppies did not deserve this, and my animals did not deserve the trauma they've been through. My animals aren't the same after spending almost a month there. They were neglected the whole time they were there. I don't even know what happened to the rest of my dog's puppies. They had these two in a freezer. But this hurts me, and I want you to know that, and I wanted you to see how grossly neglectful they are and abusive. Thank you for my time. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
This is a Jason issue, and this was just a recommendation. So when you guys are having stuff where people are rezoning and everything else, and the letters go out to petition, from the petitioner out to the community, I would like, if you guys would consider putting some more time in between when the letters go out and when the response happens, because I don't know if you guys have noticed, the postal system has not been going very well in Sioux City doing, to their restructuring of routes. So, and you guys can't do anything about it, that is a federal agency.
I was gonna say, I don't know how we can tell that.
No, 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 I am not blaming you guys at all.
I've, I have spent my whole summer writing letters asking for abatement of penalties, because you mail it at the Sioux City Post Office, and it doesn't get postmarked till three days later.
Right, in Sioux Falls.
To Sioux Falls. So everybody that filed the last.
And that's if your carrier shows up. Like I said, they've redone the routes.
But it doesn't matter, it still goes to Sioux Falls, so you guys in planning are gonna have to look at moving that timeframe and getting those letters in the mail by a week. I hate to tell you that.
It, it, I, I'm just asking for extension, because there are a lot of people that, I personally was notified about the zoning, and they hadn't got it. I was notified on Monday via email. They had not gotten their letter as of Saturday.
Yeah.
So.
The system is not working with mail anymore.
Have to have the two departments.
It, it'd just be really nice, that way it's more communication.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into it. I agree with you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Council members, I'm Tom Lindblum. Mike passed out some, let, diagrams that I'd gotten. This has been ongoing for three years. The engineering department has decided not to do anything. As you can see on the, the K and M dumpster there, that's been like that for three years, and somebody has not done anything about it, yet it's against the ordinance. And I, the way this ordinance is written, somebody must have had a sleepless night and tried to do something. It says in here that they want us to notify the engineering department. When, I don't know if any of you guys remember Ron Simmons or not, every time we set a dumpster up, we called Ron, taken care of. After Ron retired, you call up, and he said, "What are you calling us for?" I said, "Well, the ordinance says that we have to inform you." "Ah, don't worry about it." So it, it went bye-bye. And there's containers sitting around that don't even have anything on them. The, the other thing I, I found of interest in the deal today was the engineering department, or the engineering that they hire out to have done different deals. You have an engineering department, aren't they capable? 50 years ago, I was sitting where you are. The only thing that I can ever remember, the city putting out for bids for engineering, was a spiral cover at the sewage treatment plant at Ted Lovell. That was it. Otherwise, Bill Amundson and his department did all the engineering for the city back then. And if you're spending this much money, you probably don't need a city engineer.
I think that'll be a difference of opinion, sir.
Thank you.
Burton, do you have anything you'd like to add? No? Okay.
Well, I, I'd just say if we have ordinance, we should enforce them, or we should change the ordinance. I've said that numerous times here, so will you?
Add it to our agenda for our Public Works Team meeting next time, okay?
Okay.
Hold on, here he comes.
Gordon, fair city engineer. As for this ordinance, this was, you guys signed this into effect, I think, January, I'm sorry, June or July, beginning of that, one of those two months. Letters will be going out here this next week about the changes on that. We haven't enforced those, on, on any of those.
Those letters have not gone out yet?
Yeah, they will be going out.
Okay. They did have something to add, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else be heard? Under the mic.
I'm Chris Pitts, I live at 3530 West 19th, Sioux City, Iowa, that's right on the corner of 19th and Burton. And they got the property lines all messed up there. They got, our house is barely on our property, and we're on the other side of Burton, so we're paying property taxes, they say, on the street, and on the other side of the street, which we don't use. And there wasn't, hasn't been no green flags or nothing, no, no flags thrown up until we wanted to build a garage. We wanted, went down to get a building permit, and they won't give us a building permit because of the property lines.
I've tried since 1990 to get that done. We've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, Stephen, and it's still not done. We'll get you an answer here.
Stephen Pastolka, City Legal, we've met.
Yes, ma'am.
And we've been going back and forth a little bit. I have a first phase of the replat with, back from Kirk and Michael, our planning department had a bunch of comments that we needed to have to make changes on the first plat, but this gentleman's parcel is included in that part of the replat, and good grief, do I want to get it done?
So what, what's, what's, give us some good news, because we've been waiting for some for 35 years around here.
We've got a replat. It needs to have some revisions done, and then we'll have a community meeting to make sure everybody's gonna sign off on it.
And when do you think that's gonna happen?
Uh, I'm, I'm hoping still this year, I mean, the holidays make things dodgy, but...
Stephen, you're doing these by area as well, right? You're not doing the whole entire area?
Right. Uh, it'll include probably the majority of the land in the area, but yeah, this would be the first phase, and, and again, you are still included in it, that hasn't changed. It's, there's, there's been a lot of back and forth with a lot of different community members on a lot of different issues, to put it simply.
You'll get there.
I'm trying.
I don't have that many years left, Stephen. I started this when I was mayor my first year. Mr. Moore was on the planning and zoning, and here we are yet. So I hope, I hope you can get serious and get something done before the first quarter of the year.
I'm not going anywhere anytime soon.
All right. We're well aware of the problem. Well, you've worked really hard on this. I know they have. And it's been complicated, not easy, and there've been a lot of input. I'm sorry you're not getting your garage put up, and I'm, you know, I'm sorry that whole subdivision's the way it is, but, but we'll, we'll get it straightened out.
Well, I mean, you know, my grandpa, my great-grandpa bought, bought the place in, what, 1920?
1920?
Yeah, so I mean, we think we know where our property should be, you know, what, what it is, and we've been taking care of it for...
That's what they're working on, is where you're at is where you should be, but we gotta get it done.
But I mean, we still, why we gotta suffer, why, you know, they get their stuff together, you know, we can't build up, but put up a garage, you know? I mean, they used to let me put up my garage, and they just still continue to work on their planning, you know, because we're, we're well within our property.
Well, well within what we hope your property line, right?
Well, yeah.
They weren't as accurate in 1920.
Anyway, we'll continue to work.
And I think what they want to do with the garage is probably, I'm not a buildings guy, but I think it's probably perfectly fine. The problem is the right-of-way comes really close to their house, and that's, that's the issue, is with setbacks and, you know.
Well, maybe if that's the case, you can work with him and the building it.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, we'll see.
You have my phone.
Thank you. Anyone else to be heard? Alex, we'll get you going. What do you got?
Um, no, I'll be good. No comment. Thanks.
All right. Julie?
I have, just kind of an odd topic. I have been asked by at least three constituents, residents, community members, if our council has got a plan to defund our fire and our police. And I'm like, what in the world? No, no. I said, what, what do you mean by that? And they just said that, you know, they've been hearing in the media, on social media, on the radio, that, you know, we're gonna up funding, that we need to increase funding, we need to increase support to these two departments. And I just want everyone to know that this council is not planning on any kind of defunding or reduced funding. We believe in fully funding these two departments. I've been on city council for six years, and I can only remember one request for an improvement from the fire department, and it was for an employee addition that was ever declined. So I'm not sure where that information is coming from, but I want to dispel that information that we're not cutting, they're not underfunded. I think our finance director is here, and she and I have had discussions about it, because we're trying to really look at the budget this year. And if I'm not mistaken, our budget for fire and for PD takes close to 70% of the city's general funded budget. I don't know how much more we could increase that. So I just, again, I just, for people who are getting afraid that they're not funded and that we have any plans to cut their funding and not support them, we don't. And I just, I just want to make that crystal clear. It's never been discussed, we've never talked about cutting their budgets. Can they tweak them? Can they improve how much paper goes in the trash, or things like that? Of course, to be fiscally responsible, but I believe that they have the equipment they need, they have the funding to hire the staff that they need, and I can never, again, remember a time that we've turned them down for their needs. So I just want to make that crystal clear, and it, it kind of bothers me when someone reaches out and they have a fear of that happening, and after the first person, okay, the second person, the third person, then it gets me concerned that it's starting to kind of seep into what people are believing. So that's what I have to say. We support our fire department, we support our police department, and there's no plans to take any kind of a significant decrease to their budgets. That's it.
Mr. Moore? My calendar might be wrong. Do we have a joint meeting with the Library Board of Trustees?
Wednesday.
On Wednesday at noon? And that's down in the library, right, in the John Gleason? Okay. I was thinking we had our Airport Board.
That's in November. Yep.
That's all I have, Mayor, thanks. Move adjourned. Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.